First time here since he's became a senator, so it's been awhile since he's here and we are thrilled to have him. First thing I would like to do is if you have a cellphone, if you would please silence your cellphone. And then Carol Huggins, the CEO of Kai Boys is going to lead us in prayer.
Bow with me please. Dear heavenly Father, we're so thankful that we're able to live in southeastern Oklahoma, Lord, in Haskell County. Lord, this is a paradise compared to a lot of other places I've been in the world. And Lord, I'm so thankful that you allow us to be here, Lord. Lord, we're thankful for our Senator Mullins who is from Westville, not very far from here, Lord. And we're glad, Lord, that he's familiar with the needs of our area. Lord, we're thankful that you allowed him to be elected to the position he's in, Lord. And we pray that you would lead and guide him, Lord, in his decision making. Lord, we know this country's in a terrible mess, Lord, but we know you're in charge. Lord, just lead us, guide us, and direct us, and forgive us where we fail you. We ask these things in your name and for your sake. Amen.
Amen.
And if you would face the flag for the flag salute, attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And of course, we're going to turn it over to Senator Mullin. And I have already thanked him, and I know that Bobby wants to thank him for his help in getting the grant for us to redo our dam. We would have been in bad shakes if it had not been for him and our other Senator and the chief writing recommendations. And we got the grant, and hopefully they'll start on the project shortly after the first of the year. But Senator Mullin, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Now, Janice, I understand that you're retiring.
I am. So I'm so glad you came before I left.
When is your last day?
December, we have a cash drawing, I think, the 21st.
December 2025.
Did you say a cash? A cash draw?
Yes. We do a big shop Stigler campaign.
Oh, you're gonna say that cash draw sounds like my wife looking for my wallet. Sorry. It's her money. It's not mine. No, well, it's gonna, I'm sure this is gonna be a big loss. I mean, that's, you've been such a smile ever since I've been coming into this town. And it's gonna be missed. I didn't know that until I was reporting.
I gotta tell you, I told Bobby, I said, if I was brave enough, I'd, I'd wear a wrestling suit and challenge you.
A Stigler? That'd be interesting to see that. No one's stopping you. I guess today you can do whatever you want. Hey, guys, thanks for being here. I'm gonna try to maybe keep it as simple as I can and just open up for as many questions as I can get to. Would you guys like that, or you want me to give you like a big update and talk for 15 minutes? What would you guys like me to do? I can do whatever. My Lord, I can talk for an hour. But I really have been going around these, going around to the towns that I haven't been able to get to because I just, I'm on the road all the time. I spend a lot of time internationally. I was just informed just today that they want me to take off on the 23rd and go to the Middle East because of what's been happening, it was going on there. The problem is, is I'm scheduled to be in western Oklahoma the following week. So I don't, I talked to Brooke, she runs my life because I don't run my life at all. I have this thing called, I tell my wife one of these days, I cannot wait to be spontaneous again. Where I don't have a schedule, when I wake up every single morning and have bathroom breaks actually scheduled into my, into my day. I'd like to just use the bathroom when I want to, you know, maybe? That'd be nice. But, but I'm scheduled, right, all the way through? And so now we're trying to figure out how to do my schedule if I've actually got to go out to the Middle East. So we're, but my whole point on that is I spent so much time there, and I'm thankful for it. And the reason why, the reason why I do that is because there's only a handful of us in Congress that has a, that has dual clearance. And what I mean by dual clearance is because I was on the House Intel, it's my, my clearance for it has carried over with me now being on Senate Armed Services, that the two intersect. And I, it sounds, a lot of people don't realize it, but just because you're a member of Congress doesn't mean you have access to both. As a member of Congress, you have a TS clearance, but you don't have a TS or above, right? A TS is just kind of, you have secret, which is really nothing that is actually classified. Then secret TS is kind of classified but more sensitive, and then you go above it. But when you're on House, when you're on Intel, regardless if you're on Senate Intel or House Intel, you're only dealing with the three-letter aggregates, right? The three-letter agencies, the CIA, FBI, NIA, I mean, there's a whole bunch of them. We got 17 different letter, different agencies out there. And then when you're on the Armed Services, you're only dealing with the classified settings that the DOD's dealing with. And so to be able to merge the two, there isn't a whole lot of us that have that. And I could give you a number, but it's really, it's unique as a member to have that. So I spent a lot of time traveling and going to those different areas. And they pulled me and they constantly were scheduling me different ways. They just found out it's gonna be in Houston with JD on, on Monday. And they said, while you're there, can we give a briefing, an overnight briefing? Which means an overnight briefing is we're gonna be dealing with our counterparts in another part of the world. An overnight briefing means we start at 10:00 PM and we go until about 5:00 AM in the morning. And Houston has a SCIF that we're able to do that in. And, and I say all that because I spend so much time doing that, I don't get around as much as I, as I'd like to be. And my wife, she does okay with it. And now when I'm at home, she's got used to me being gone and she's asking when I leave again. And so I'm really kidding. That really worries me because she's always been the person that hates sleeping alone. And now she's okay with it. She says I take her pillow. And I'm like, really my pillow? She says, no, that's my side of the bed. And I was like, no, that's my side of the bed. She's like, but I sleep in it more than you. And so now I just, I'm just a loner. I don't know where I sleep. I guess my pickup. So my, my, my point is, I really appreciate you guys being here. Thank you for giving me this time. It's an honor of my life to be able to do what I'm doing. I never, most of you guys in here have known me from the first time I came in this town. I mean, it's amazing to me what type of friends you have from, you know, 12 years ago, walked into this town. And, and you guys have always been so good to me. The idea that I'm still in office and that I'm a Senator is the most humbling thing I can ever do. I mean, as it was reported, I'm a kid from Westfield. Who the heck would have thought that I'd be in the position I'm in? But you guys gave me an opportunity to be in a fight because it's, you know, it's a scary world we're living in right now. I mean, it's the most volatile I've ever seen it. People always say this is the most, the most important election of our lifetime. And, and every time it's like, okay, how can it always be the most important election of our lifetime? I can tell you, it's, it's, it is the most important direction of our country. This November election, we're gonna decide what direction our country's gonna go. I mean, where we're at right now is gonna take 10 years if we can recover from it. I mean, at least a decade to recover from where we're at. What's happened around the world, we're on the brink of going into World War III. And the only person that's making that decision isn't the United States. It's a guy in China by the name of President Xi. He makes that decision, not us. We don't make that decision right now. If he chooses to go into Taiwan, we got a choice. Either we fight him or we surrender world power. It's that simple. Why you say that? Is because we walked away from Afghanistan, we walked away from our allies there. We're wavering on our support for Israel. I can go down deep biblically on that one if you guys want to. That one scares the daylights out of me. The war in Ukraine, if you guys want to talk about that, you guys asked me about it. We can dive in deep why that's important to the United States and why that's important to the world. And so we're wavering in Ukraine even though we had a, we had an agreement with them that they would give up their nuclear weapons. We'd be there for them. I mean, that was a Budapest memorandum that we signed that said that if you give up your, your, your nuclear weapons, we will be there for you in the event specifically if Russia invades you. And we're wavering on that. That means that our word, which that's what our allies relied on because they could always count on our word, that means our word is damaged. And if we don't defend Taiwan, then our word is permanently damaged. We surrender world power. We surrender world power, that means we surrender the world economy. Because the world power, there's always been there, and the person that's always been the world power also controls the economy, the currency, the shipping lanes, and the trade. It's what they do. It's just that simple. And so either we're there or we surrender it to a communist country that's going to allow Russia to run Europe, gonna allow Iran to run the Middle East, and they're gonna run Asia and the seas. That's, that's the world we're living in right now. And there's two different directions between two different people running for office right now. That's gonna take us in two different ways. And one is through appeasement, which no country respects appeasement. They only respect strength. And one is through strength. And I'm not trying to get political, I'm not trying to tell you how to vote, I'm just telling you that there is a difference direction. And we as a country will make that decision. We as a country are gonna make that decision in November. Regardless of how you vote, there's gotta be a whole lot of people to agree with you for your side to win. And we as a country is gonna make that decision, and it bothers us. It bothers me. That's not even getting into the economy. Because the economy is a backbone of our energy source, or the energy is a backbone of our economy. And without reliable and affordable energy, you can't have a reliable and affordable economy. They don't go to, they don't go without one another. If you want to see inflation, see high energy cost. You want to see destabilization have, inside your economy, have unreliable energy. Doesn't, because energy creates the product and their energy delivers the product. And so it is the, it is the driving mechanism to anything that we have in our economy is based on energy. And if you take certain products away and you don't have all the above energy, then you are surrendering that part of the world economy. If we're not actively working with being an exporter of energy, then we are giving that part to the Saudis, to OPEC. And we're allowing them to make that decision. You understand? And so there's a lot of issues that we're facing as a country that we are, we're not just looking at it in November as Republicans versus the Democrats. We're looking at the foundation and the direction of our country. Which way are we gonna go? Which way do we wanna go? Do we still want to be the powerhouse? Do we still want to be the, the, the nation that everybody looks to as freedom? They still want to look at the nation that we can, that we can be relied on, that they can trust us, that our allies are allies, and our friends are our friends, and people be aware of them? Is that the country we're gonna have? Or are we gonna have that country where we start going backwards? And this is the time that we start turning. I don't, I personally can't imagine that. I mean, I, people say all the time to me, I think our country's too far gone. I'm like, no, we're not. We're just beginning this fight, right? And you guys are in that fight with me, so I want to say that I appreciate you all being here. I'm gonna stop right there. Let's open it up for questions. And like I said, let's, we, if you guys want to talk about the political atmosphere, I can't speak about it until you ask me, like really dive into it. You guys want to talk about that, you guys gotta ask me a specific question, and I can go wherever you all just ask me. If you guys want to talk about the economy, you want to talk about energy, you want to talk about funding bills, you want to talk about, you know, why Ukraine's important, what's actually happening in the Middle East and what's going on over there, and why that, why Israel was holding that thing together right now, let's go there. You guys ask me though, and we'll go wherever you guys want to. So I'll stop. Let's open it for questions. Not everybody at once.
Let's talk about the border.
Okay. What do you want to talk about on that? The drugs?
What are the Republicans, if they get in office, what are they gonna do about all the illegals?
Yeah.
Gotaways? Are we gonna?
So.
What are we gonna do?
Yeah, so let's, let's talk about the, the ones that are already in the country.
Okay.
There's, day one, the President can sign executive orders that will stop the flow of illegals immediately, immediately. And I'll, I'll circle into that one. First of all, let's talk about, let's talk about the ones that are already here. So we have, there's, there's LPRs, which are legal permanent residents. Those are green card holders, right? And then there's the LRs, which are legal residents. Those are the ones that are on parole. The ones that are on parole are the ones that went to the border illegally, claimed asylum, and they were given a piece of paper in 24 hours to parole them, which was 85% of the people that we had first contact with. In 24 hours, they were paroled underneath this current administration. And they were said, okay, well, we don't have time to hear your case, so come back in six to nine years and we'll hear your case. But they have a piece of paper that says they're legally here because they're awaiting their court date. So they're LRs. The issue with that is since they're here legally, we can't just deport them and tell the police have contact with them. And typically, the way it's supposed to work, if the police have contact with them, the Sheriff's Department has contact with them, and, and, and it's, you know, obviously, they committed a crime, then they can be deported at that point. Right now, they won't be deported. ICE isn't picking them up. No one's picking them up. They're actually releasing them, and they have actually hardly no jurisdiction over them. I mean, they'll tell you that. If we want to talk to the sheriff or the police chief, they'll tell you that it's impossible for them to do anything. But with Trump administration, that'll change. And so as they make contact with them, as they've been in trouble, they will be getting shipped out. Trump has already said that. They'll be shipping them out. But we can't just go round them up and start sending them out of here because they're legally here regardless of it. On the other side of that, they're legally here. LPRs, legal permanent residents, have a green card and they're able to work. LRs are not. So what happens to them? They're legally here, so they're all responsible, so they can be enrolled in every social program that you're available for, including Social Security disability, which is where most of them are at. That's scary. They're also eligible for Medicare and Medicaid because they're legally here. That, that's, and so my issue on this one is if they're here as residents and they're here for six to nine years, then they should be required to work. I mean, and people go, well, hey, a second, you're now they're, now you're making them where they're, you know, you're giving them amnesty. No, I'm not. I'm just saying you gotta pay your way. I'm not gonna put you in a hotel for six to nine years. That's not my job. I'm not gonna pay your, pay your, your, your medical bills and your grocery bills and your electricity bill and all that for six to nine years. That's not my responsibility. There's another country in the world that's doing that. So if you're, if you're, if you have an LR, even though we didn't want them to come over that way, underneath Trump, it wouldn't happen that way. But they are here now because that's consequences of the election in 2020. Then what do we do with them? We should at least require them to work. I mean, that should be it. So first of all, that, that, that problem is how they're gonna be deported. Talking about the border, how we can stop it, you know, from, and the remain in Mexico policy, the reason why it was challenged in court and overturned is because we already, not overturned but sustained, is because we already have a policy in agreement with Mexico and Canada that's called the first, first country of entry. So when, when, when a, a, a person that's claiming asylum comes from a different country and they enter into Mexico, because of our agreement, technically, they gotta claim asylum in Mexico. They can't go through Mexico and then claim it inside the United States, which is why it goes back to Trump's remain in Mexico policy. You're not gonna come over here and claim asylum because we have a pact already with Canada and New Mexico, and the same thing with us. And if someone crosses our country, they can't go into Mexico or go into North, or, or into Canada and, and claim asylum. So that, when that puts in place immediately, you're gonna see a tremendous drop. Why I say this? Because the last data that I've seen, which I haven't seen in a little bit, the last data that I've seen, 16% of the ones coming over was from, was from Mexico. 19% was from Chinese, Chinese residents or Chinese citizens. And then the rest from all, from 158 different countries. So you're talking about immediately, you're curving, you're hitting the curve by 84%, dropping it immediately, just by one policy remain in Mexico. The second one, B, on the 16%, the second one that President Trump would put in place, was that you have to prove, not, not automatically get it, but you would have to prove that you have a true threat by the government. When you're claiming asylum, you're claiming asylum because the government is after you, not a cartel, not someone wanting to hurt you or your family, but the government, and you have to prove that. It wants, and, and this was all policies that we've already been working on before. At that 16%, I bet you less than 3% would actually qualify for that. That make sense to you? So those policies, it's not just Republican Party. President Trump has already said that he'll put those back in place, which is why you saw the, his last, his last year in office, you saw the illegal crossings just tank because they couldn't get in here. They couldn't use our rules against us. He had cut, he cut the loopholes out. So I feel positive about that. Now, the drugs coming into us, the drug cartels, I mean, they're, I mean, the wealth that these drug cartels is staggering, what they have. Even if we cut off the border, the drugs are still gonna come in. I mean, they have stealth planes now. They have drones, I mean, an army of drones that they're bringing stuff across. They're bringing it around the borders, where there is no physical barrier. They're going around in the water. They have submarines, true submarines, not the ones that you see on some of these TikToks and Instagram where they just kind of sink in the water and they're just kind of flowing. They have actual submarines now that they're bringing stuff in. They're gonna figure out a way to get here. We've just gotta be able to combat it a little bit more, and then we're gonna have to go in after them. And either we're gonna work with Mexico or we're not. But we're gonna have to go in after them. We can't allow them to have safe haven right on the other side of our border. We gotta take the fight to them. Otherwise, you're just playing defense. And they're really good at playing the cat and mouse game. And what we continue to do is we're playing whack-a-mo, and we're never getting to the head of the person. And even when you chop off the head, you still got three more people behind them. You gotta, you gotta go to their fight. You need to go take it to the house. We need to kick in their front door and burn their house down. And, and, and we gotta continue to do that because someone else is gonna, we just might have a drug need here. But then as, and then as a country, we got a lot of infrastructure we gotta build too because now we're gonna do with all these individuals. If we take away fentanyl, they're gonna start cooking meth again. So what, so what do we do? I mean, I'm just telling you, that's, it's serious. So then we gotta be starting to think about what we're gonna do with these individuals that are on the street. Where we, it's wrecked ours. That's why I said it's gonna take a decade or longer to get over this. What are we gonna do as a, as a, as a nation, as a community, as a state? You can put in these, these nonprofit organizations that are out there. They're great. It's wonderful. But at some point, we need to have a serious conversation about those with severe mental illness. Putting them in jail doesn't work. You know, when we arrest someone because they have a mental breakdown, what ends up happening is you guys end up paying the hospital bills, and you pay a sheriff or a police officer to sit there at their, at their bedside at the, at the hospital for who knows how long. Right now, Old Mogi has someone sitting at the bedside and they've been there for 14 days. 14 days. And they're having, and by the way, the city of Old Mogi is having to pay for his medical bills and he's in ICU at San Francisco. You guys are paying for it. So what do we do as a community? At some point, we need to start thinking about this. I mean, I know that politically correct, this isn't always a good thing because there was a reason why they all shut them down. Maybe there's a way we start thinking about, do we bring back mental hospitals? I mean, seriously, we gotta have something. We need to start making these conversations because it's not getting better, and it's not gonna get better if you take the drugs away. They're gonna find drugs. If they can't find drugs, they're gonna start sniffing gas. They're gonna start huffing paint again. They will get that high one way or the next. There's, there's, they're not just gonna quit. It's not gonna happen. It's just like, you're not just gonna stop eating. You're gonna get, you're gonna find food. Eventually, you're gonna find it. So there has to be, there has to be, we gotta be thinking down the road, three years, four years down the road as we start moving forward. Yes, sir? Who had the question? You had the question. Yes, sir.
Will you explain the importance of Ukraine?
Yeah, so let's talk about Ukraine for a little bit. First of all, I mentioned the Budapest memorandum. Is everybody here familiar with the Budapest memorandum? Who isn't? Be honest with me, so I just need to know if I need to explain. Okay, thank you. So Budapest memorandum, we started negotiating with Ukraine in 93 to give up their nuclear weapon. At the time, Ukraine had the second largest nuclear warhead deposits in the world. Think about that. The second largest. And we started negotiating with them and saying, hey, you may not have a way to actually manage these correctly. You know, we're in a downfall. You remember that we had a little bit of issue going on with Russia at the time. They were kind of collapsing. Russia had been kind of helping Ukraine oversee that a little bit. But Ukraine was keeping them because they were worried about, you know, Russia coming in. And we said, I tell you what, if you'll give them up, this was the Budapest memorandum is, if you'll give them up, allow us to decommission them all, resolve the issue, destroy them, whatever we need to do, then we will be there to protect you. So you no longer need nuclear weapons. We will be there. The United States will guarantee you that if you're invaded specifically by Russia, we'll be in the fight with you. What I've always said is we're either good as our word or we're not. We said we are or we're not gonna be there. I mean, like it or not, I wasn't there in 94. I was a junior in high school in 94. And so I wasn't, I mean, I didn't sign that. I didn't agree to it. But Ukraine made the decision at the time that they would rather have the United States there depending on us than to have their own nuclear weapons to deter the Russians from coming in. They gave them up. 20 years later, 30 years later, you had, actually, it was 20 years later, almost 20 years later to the day, you had Russia move into Crimea in 2014. And we did nothing underneath the Obama administration. They didn't move when Trump was in office. Biden goes back in and they're trying to take all of Ukraine. Why are they trying to take all Ukraine? That's the question. So what do we all depend on right now? Would you rather lose your wallet or your phone? Be honest.
Wallet.
Everybody, wallet. Why? Because I gotta have my phone to call for new credit cards. I mean, I can get my bank accounts because I'm probably saving my passwords and my bank accounts on my stupid phone. Correct? Don't dance, sir. That one goes, you are, you're an idiot. No, I'm kidding. I might do the same. But you would, I mean, the other day, I take off and I get all the way to Muskogee. And I was like, and I've been driving for like an hour, and I'm like, my phone hasn't went off this signal. My phone normally goes off at like 5:00 in the morning. It doesn't stop. And it's 8:00 in the morning, and I had a phone call in an hour, and I was like, oh, dang it. My phone must be on silent. It didn't hook up my Bluetooth. And I started looking for it, and all of a sudden, I realized I left my phone on the counter. And I knew immediately. I'm already down the road. I have no idea even where I'm going. I knew my meeting was in Tulsa, but I wasn't really thinking past that. So I didn't need my GPS, but I had no idea where the address was. I didn't, and I was like, I need to call my wife and get the address. I can't call my wife. I didn't have anything. I had nothing. And I'm like in a panic. I'm, it's, it's 70 degrees in my truck and I'm, I'm just sweaty. I don't even, I mean, then I start making a decision on what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna go to my office, you know, my corporate office. I'm gonna go and pull in to Mullin. I'm gonna grab a phone. I'm gonna call my wife. And of course, when I call her, she's like, your phone's been ringing off the hook. I'm already on my way. I'm halfway there. Where do you want to meet me at? And I said, first of all, just give me the address where I need to go. And then it's been a long time since I just operated off of an E address and not a GPS. So I had to think about where my address was. I mean, really start counting numbers again. My point on all that is we all depend on this. Plus our phones, plus our cars. Everything we depend on is made out of raw earth minerals. The United States has, has zero. We don't have a raw earth mineral mine in the country. Do we have them? Yes. Can we get to them? No. In fact, up in northeast Oklahoma, where our strip mines are, that's, you know, a, a, a major cleanup disaster, they have said that the, under that zinc mine is raw earth minerals. But we can't mine it because we can't do it ourselves anymore because we, you know, we got EPA. We can't do anything. So the five largest deposits in the world that we use, one, number one is in China. Number two is in China. Number three is in, is in Afghanistan. We're not there. Number four is in, that we're mining, currently mining, is in Africa. China's mining it. And number five is Ukraine. Now, number four, the fourth largest, is Ukraine, what we're expecting. It's already estimated $3.2 trillion, with a T, trillion dollars. Most experts say that it's probably double, it's probably 6.4, which would make it the largest raw earth mineral deposit in the world. The United States has first right of refusal to that mine. Meaning we'll mine it and we'll get first right of refusal to the raw earth minerals. If Russia's able to take over the raw earth mineral mine, then you have Russia and China that controls the five largest mineral deposits in the world. That's a problem. Huge, huge problem. Because everything we have in the defense, all the equipment they carry on them, all this stuff in missile defense, all this stuff in our jets, all this stuff on our, on our ships, submarines, vehicles, satellites, everything has raw earth minerals in it. Everything. And we make none of it here inside the United States. So the five largest deposits will be China, 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 Russia. Problem. Number two, the second largest gas supply in Europe is in Ukraine. If Russia gets control of that second largest gas supply, Russia controls over 70% of all the energy going in to Europe. What did I say about energy? Energy is a backbone of what? The economy. Russia all of a sudden controls all of Europe's economy. Controls it because they had to have it. So 70% of all the energy now will be coming out of Russia. Number three, 25% of the food supply in Europe and Africa comes out of Ukraine. So now Russia will control minerals, energy. So now Russia will control minerals, energy, and food. And it'll control all of Europe. It's important. That's a big issue. Huge issue. And, and, and our biggest interest is rare earth minerals. That's our biggest interest. The energy and the food is Europe's biggest interest. And while it is important to us, it's not as important it is to them. So that's why it's important. That's why we've got to, because of Budapest memorandum, because of those three things. It's a lot there, and a lot of stuff that's hard to unpack, because I get read in on this stuff, I get briefed on it daily. Unfortunately, the public doesn't get it, because you get your news from news sources, and news sources are not news sources, they are talk shows. And I don't care if it's Fox, I don't care if it's CNN, I don't care if it's MSNBC, I don't care if it's Newsmax, One Nation, I'm on all of them, it doesn't matter. They're all talk shows. Everyone I go on with, I'm going on with a different personality. And that personality is giving you their opinion, not necessarily news. What else? Yes, sir? Oh, now you have a question?
I want to talk a little bit about federal government outreach. We're a cattle state, an ag state, a gas state, natural gas state, and we're an ag community here. So the USDA comes out with a rule with mandatory EID tags. And we have lobbyists pushing it, state lobbyists pushing it, national lobbyists pushing it. My question is, Congresswoman Hagelman introduced a bill to block this. Numerous Republicans in the House have signed on to this. It seems quite difficult sometimes to get our representation in Oklahoma, which we're an ag state, to sign on to some of this stuff concerning ranching. Where do you stand on the mandatory EID tags? And how much more regulatory things need to come down the pipeline before we really start continuing to hurt our farmers' ranches?
So I, I've been pretty outspoken about this. I, it's in the Senate, or in the House, not in the Senate, right? I, I'm not in favor of any mandatory. I hate mandatory. If you're gonna mandatory, if you're gonna mandate it, then you need to fund it, and funding needs to come along with it. I think it's a track. I think what will end up happening on this, you know, because we run a Cal Cav operation, meaning that I lose money every day on it, and if you make money with it, God bless you. I just haven't figured out how to do that yet. I mean, I, this year, I had to buy a new tractor and a new truck, which, you know, the tractor came from one place, and then my truck came from Dunn. And it's still expensive, even though it does make a good price, but then I had to put a hay beller on the back, not hay beller, but a hay bed on the back of it. And so between the two, I've got a quarter million dollars in a piece of, in a truck and in a tractor, right? I don't, that's a lot of cattle I gotta sell to make that up, and I haven't even bought land for it. And so we have a, there's, it's hard enough to make it the way it is, but the, the tags, I see it pushing us more and more towards corporate farms, like you got with pork, and you got with, with, with eggs, and, and, you know, obviously poultry as a whole. I, I have a problem with that, because, you know, we had Walmart come to our place, our places, our section lines are right on the back of, of Arkansas. You know, we're real close, just like everybody around here, right? And Walmart wanted to start buying direct from a farm. So they heard about us, one of the Waltons kids has a, has several restaurants, and wanted to take, you know, our cattle straight from our place to their table, and I was like, man, this is great. I may be able to make money. And they came out, and they started looking at my place, and they said, all right, we want you to do this, this, and this. I, I knew they'd wanted me to do some stuff, but the deal breaker to us is, they wanted me to fence in my entire creek. The only place my cows are drinking right now is out of my creek. All my tanks are dry, and other than that, I'm paying for them to drink. And I'm not gonna pay for them to drink, but I got water running across my place, right? And then, not to mention, that creek gets out of its beds at least twice a year, sometimes three times a year, but literally twice every spring it gets out, and washes everything out. My water gaps, everything gets, get washed out. And, and their whole point was, is that we don't want any of the cows to pollute the I want to know what buffaloes used to do when they cross this place, right? I mean, I, I, I don't, I don't, I can't imagine, I don't know how cattle all of a sudden is polluting something that's, that's natural. And, and that's, but that was a corporate farm, that's what they were gonna make us do. And I just said, no. Right or wrong, I just, I said, no. I mean, that'd take up, for me to put that fence on, it'd be, it'd probably four miles of fencing, maybe, be actually six, it'd be six miles, because it goes across three sections. So it'd be six miles of fencing that I had to put up. I just, it's, I mean, my T-posts alone, I, and my wire, I didn't even put Gatcha Wire up there, because it's gonna be washed out anyways. But I mean, it would be, it'd be, it'd be impossible, it just, it doesn't make any sense to me. And so, but the, but what I see is corporate pushing this. And, and you know, there's, there's numbers, you know, if you're large, if you're, if you're, if you're, if you're selling off the hoof, and you're just going to stockyard, or not stockyards, but you're just, you're selling at the, at cell barns, you're not really able to, you, you don't have to necessarily do it on the farm, but some of these, at the cells, they have to. But I don't like any of it, and I just don't think it's there. Here's the thing that you have, out of four hundred, or five hundred and thirty-five of us, I mean, the House and Senate, sixty come from rural America, although sixty, I'd say less than fifteen actually come from rural. Now, listen, I know you guys think you're rural, but I drove by here, and you got fast food all the way through this place. At Westfield, we have Casey's. Okay? So, big difference, you guys are city folk. You have places you can actually go buy a pair of shoes. We're going to Siloan Springs, Arkansas, to get a pair of shoes. And, and, but, I mean, you're still rural, I'm joking by that, but you're still very rural. And so to say that, to say that where they come from places like here in Stigler, they're being the teens. And if you say, how many actually operate today, or even grew up on a Cal Cav operation or anything, a stocker, stockyards, whatever, you might have five. So it's not important. They don't see it. And between the Cattlemen's Association, and then the, maybe different associations that are out there, they're not active on this. Some of them came out, spoken about it, but some of their bigger guys that fund some of these associations, they're for it. So a lot of these associations are split. So how are these guys gonna know? Because you're not gonna come up there and lobby, right? I mean, little individual guys aren't gonna come up there and lobby, and so where they're getting their news, they're getting their news from people that's coming in their office and saying, either we're for it, or we're different, or we're indifferent by it. And a lot of the associations that come up and talk to me are indifferent by it. Now, if you start talking to our local chapter, our state chapter, they don't want it. But the national chapter is what we're talking about. And, and so we're, why I'm pushing against it, it's an uphill battle, because most people just don't understand it.
But, but most people are concerned. See, that's, that's where I think us ag people go wrong. We just target us ag people. And understand these people are multiple generations removed, senators and congresspeople. Maybe we approach it because they're concerned, everybody's gotta eat. So at some point, everybody's gotta understand it, before everybody goes out of business and all it is is political integration.
Well, we're one of the only, only supply chains, if you want to say, that we raise them, we take on full, we, I mean, we take, we, we raise them, we take on the full responsibility for it, full cost of it, and we still pay it to take the market. And the market isn't dictated, we have to take whatever it is to sell. And, and prices are high. I mean, last weekend, I tried to buy bread three-year-olds, and I pulled off on it, because they were three thousand apiece, and then I said, well, I'm just gonna buy bread heifers, and they were thirty-two hundred apiece. I was like, oh, my lord. But then I started thinking about it, and I was like, you know, really? If you think about the prices of cattle, and what we're having to pay, I mean, you go to, for a family of six like myself, I go to McDonald's, I'm spending eighty bucks. I mean, seriously, there's eight of us, six kids, so there's eight of us. I'm, I'm not joking, it's eighty bucks to go to Sonic for me. And, but if you really start thinking about it, in, in ninety-one, what was it, ninety-one, ninety-two, something like that, when I turned, I was fifteen, about ready to turn sixteen, I sold two calves and two cows, I sold two pair. And I bought a nineteen-eighty-three GMC one-ton, single-wheel, four-fifty-four, white, blue pinstripe, main or windows, but it had glass backs, it sounded awesome.
Square vine?
Oh, of course square, it's eighty-three.
I have this picture in my head.
I had my, I had the, why they took the, the, the headlight from bright lights to dim off the floor, I'll never know, because it's the most easiest thing in the world, right? Loved it. Paid twenty-five-hundred dollars for it. I got twenty-four-hundred dollars out of the, twelve-hundred dollars apiece for the pair. You think about it now, a pair is going for, been on the week, between, right now, between twenty-eight, thirty-four-hundred, right? Am I right on that? That's really not that much, because at the same time, I paid twenty-five-hundred dollars for a truck that wasn't even ten years old, that was a four-wheel drive. What's that truck gonna cost you now?
Twenty-five.
Yeah, no, this truck, by the way, had twenty thousand miles on it.
Had another two thousand.
Yeah, if you're gonna be more than that, if you can buy a twenty-five-thousand-dollar truck for that, or twenty-five thousand for less than twenty thousand miles, I wanna go buy it. A new truck, a new truck like this, you know, is, you're gonna spend seventy-five thousand to a hundred thousand on a truck? The prices of cattle have not increased that much. They haven't quadrupled, they've doubled, and they're always fluctuating. Really, if you start thinking about, I mean, land, you used to pay fifteen-hundred dollars an acre for, I'm paying now between fifty-six-hundred dollars, which means it has no fences on it, and to eight-thousand dollars an acre. We run four acres to one cow, cleared, that's what we figured, four to one. So let's say it's five-thousand dollars for an acre, it's twenty-thousand dollars for one cow. I never pay that off. I got, I'm owning land, and I'm putting cattle on it. Right? So actually, my, my beef prices, my protein prices should be about eight-thousand dollars a head. If you really think about where it needs to be. So they're just running, running this up, our cost. Unfortunately, we can't adjust our prices, we've gotta take market on it, but it's gonna burst at some point, because there's not gonna be enough people there to be able to do it. I, I put money into my ranch every single week. Every week, I'm putting money on it. Not taking money off, I'm putting money on it. I was so happy last year, I only lost twenty-five-thousand dollars. And that's because I sold a bunch of cattle. And I was so happy. I thought that was awesome. My wife can't complain to me anymore. So, anyway. Yes, sir?
Sounds like a smart-ass question, but who is running the country today?
No, that's a great question. I don't know. I don't know. I mean, yes, who's running the country? I don't know. It's not Joe Biden. If I were to say, this may be the Wilson year, the years, you know, withdraw Wilson's wife around the country when he was incapacitated, I think, I think Joe Biden may be running the country. Joe is nowhere in sight. I don't, I actually don't know who's running the country. I'm not trying to be ugly, I'm not trying to play politics. I don't know. I don't know if it's the chief of staff, the administration isn't even meeting, meeting with Democrats at this point. They're totally absent. Harris is out on the campaign trail, which, you know, we don't really want her running the country anyways, that's why we gotta win the election in November. So I, I, I could not tell you who we're meeting with. I don't know who we're negotiating with, who we're talking to. I don't, I don't have a clue.
And that's scary.
It's very scary, because it could be staff. And staff in Washington DC, remember, over ninety percent, ninety-six percent of them didn't vote for Trump. So they're very, 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 very liberal, very liberal staff. Yes, sir?
The assassination attempt on President Trump, is there any more, anything elaborate you can dispel on that, as far as the Secret Service? No one's, I guess, has been let go, or there's not anything going on with that investigation?
Well, there's a lot going on in the investigation. I, I hold judgment on the acting director. I'll, I'll let the acting director see what happens when we start getting classified briefings on it. I've been briefed in more of a classified setting in this, but there still isn't any answers. I mean, there's no excuse. Mind you, what happened here is stuff that I used to do overseas. I used to do a lot of advance work. And, and setting up a site for security is difficult, but you have SOPs that you work off all the time, sustaining operating procedures. And, and, and this is such a failure from that point. You have, you use that three rings anytime you're setting up a perimeter like this. You'll have an outer perimeter, you have an inner perimeter, and then you'll have the diamond, which is on the principal itself. That's, that's the Secret Service, right? It's not unusual for the Secret Service to rely on local law enforcement. In fact, that's actually any of us. I mean, even for us overseas, we would use local law enforcement, even if it be the NSF, Afghan National Security Force, or whoever it is, we usually use them on the third perimeter. And, and the third perimeter is a pretty soft perimeter, but it takes control of all high points and all vision points. So any buildings that's within that perimeter, that'll have a direct site onto the principal, regardless of when they're getting out of their vehicle, or when they're gonna be talking by a window, or if they're gonna be on a stage, you take control of that. That's, that's part of, that's part of the perimeter. And that'll be by local law enforcement. Most of them uniform, because it's supposed to be deterrent, so you, and you'll be, there'll be undercover guys there too, but that's just looking at the crowd. But it'll, uniform will be a high presence of uniform officers. Anywhere on that, and usually, we take control of the high point anyways, and actually, not just have eyes on it, but feet, feet on it. Right? And then you have the, the second perimeter, and that's where you're getting your credentials checked. That's where you're getting your bags checked, that's where you're getting your tickets stamped, you know, that's at a ballgame, where you're walking through that gate. That's your, that's your second perimeter. You're gonna have high security, you're gonna have security guards, you're gonna have, you're gonna probably see these guys that are in SWAT gear, and more, more deterrence on that, you're gonna have all that going on. And then your third ring will be the, be the detail. Supposed to be one person that controls all the comms between everybody. Well, we've been told that there was no comms, direct. Obviously, the failure on the perimeter of that building, we were originally told that, you know, it was, it was the angle of it, which is, I mean, there's no thing, it was a steep, too steep angle, it's got an vantage point, because if you're able to climb it, when you're able to climb it with climbing gear, if you can do it, someone else can't, that was always our point of view. You know, if it's a water tower without a ladder, it doesn't matter. If you can climb it, somebody else can climb it too. So you get your butt up there, you don't make the assumption that no one can get up there. And then, and then we were told that someone was supposed to be on it, but yet, no one's taken responsibility who was supposed to be on that building. And, and then we were, never been told who the AIC is, because the director isn't the person doing that. Every one of these sites will have an AIC, agent in charge. And the agent in charge will be the one setting all that up, coordinating it all too. We've heard that the Secret Service wasn't even in the pre-meeting, that happened at nine AM that morning. That's a problem. Huge problem. You have, you have your third ring that's not communicating with anybody? Huge failure point. So the investigation goes on, but we haven't got any answers on it. Now, this whole thing about, you know, they tried to kill him and stuff, I don't believe that for a second. Secret Service, they're good people. You have, you have bad, bad leadership, and when you hire people based on, maybe because you're trying to hit a demographic, because you have certain quotas, because you need to hire a certain person, because you're trying through this equality, and you're not hiring the best person for the job, regardless of race, regardless of gender, regardless of anything else, you just want the best person in charge. When you have that, you're going to have failures all the way through, which is why you see some corporate boards fell into, because they had a quota, they got to put so many, you know, minorities on the board, and, and they're not putting the best people on the board. Same thing in some of these agencies. So I don't believe for a second that they were trying to kill the president, President Trump. I know there's a lot of stuff going out there, I'm telling you, I just don't believe it at all. President Trump doesn't believe it at all either. I mean, I talked to President Trump the morning after, and he was praising the Secret Service on how they jumped on him, but they knocked his shoes off, and he was upset by that, and he made a joke, and he says, he says, you know, my ear's messed up like yours too now, Mark Lane, you know, because of cauliflower ear. I was like, well, a little bit different, sir. He's like, yeah, but I got an earring, I could actually put an earring in my ear, because it literally pierced his ear. And, uh, uh, and, and he, he doesn't believe that either. It was just a failure from top to bottom. And what I've said over and over again, and I've told all my management this ever, forever, and this is a theory that I've always lived on, I've never fired anybody for making a mistake. I fire you when you can't admit you made a mistake. Why? Because if you can't admit you made a mistake, then you're destined to do it again. If you make a mistake and you're trying your best, I chalk it up for a valuable lesson, you'll never do it again. Because I made a ton of mistakes, and still make mistakes. Uh, and, and so that miss, that making a mistake is not qualification in my book just to fire you. But when you deny it, and you didn't debrief, you didn't analyze it, you didn't look at it and go, what could I have done better? Then you're going to do it again. And right now, we, I've asked for their debrief, because regardless if we had a successful event or not, even work I used to do, we always debriefed at it. And after you debrief, you always learn two things, what you could have done better, and what you did correctly, and how to make sure that's always part of an SOP moving forward, because there's always changes, there's always changes. So I just, I just think that there's, that there's some, there's a, there's some accountability that's going to take place, but right now they haven't came forward with it yet. Yes?
I was going to ask about AI. AI is, it's a tool, it can transfer doctor's orders, it can have autonomous factors, you know, but what, what are the drawbacks of it? And does the Senate talk about AI? Who's powered by AI?
Yeah. So as Kamala say, AI is two words, A, I, no, she literally said that, by the way, I'm not making that up. I'm, 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 I'm not kidding, so I'm not making fun of her, I'm just like, even I, who's, I'm not really into technology, I kind of like, hmm. So AI, it's, it's already been around us, it's become political, but it's been everywhere anyways. I mean, every time you use GPS, it's artificial intelligence. Uh, anytime you use your, your, your passcodes and suggested passcodes, it's artificial intelligence. Anytime you use suggestions, uh, you know, when you have suggestions set up, and there's, there's choosing things for you, it's artificial intelligence. I mean, artificial intelligence has been everywhere around us, except now it's working its way into defense. And, uh, and I mean, we use artificial intelligence ever since we've used a computer. I mean, you really think about it, what is artificial intelligence? It's what you input, and then it, it recycles the data faster and spits it out to us. I mean, that's, that's what artificial intelligence is. We have to embrace it, because it's here, and it can be beneficial, and it can be dangerous. It can be a weapon. So as a country, we either become the best at it, or become second best at it. Artificial intelligence is used every day in defense. When we have missile defense, what is missile defense? Missile is, defense isn't like it was in World War II, where you throw up a bunch of flak in the air and hopefully knock something out of the sky. Missile defense is because when the missile is shot, we compute it immediately, we know what it is based on the, the blast from the missile, we know which direction it's going, because the way that it takes off, we know the arc that it's got to shoot, and we shoot up missiles up to it to intercept it. That's artificial intelligence. And missile defense has been around for decades now. We just have to get rid of the fact, the stigma, and we've got to embrace it as a nation, because if it's there, which it is, we need to be the leader in it. And we are embracing that. In the intelligence world, we're embracing it, in DOD, we're embracing it, and in Congress, we're really investing in it, because we know it is the future. And so there is a working committee that I'm part of in defense, that we're embracing it, it's called the Futures, or Future Fighters, Future Warriors. Um, and, uh, and then there's Defense on the Intelligence, working, I'm not working on that one in defense, I don't know if Langford, because that's where James is, he's on defense, or he's on the Intelligence Committee on the Senate, I don't know if he's working on it or not, I haven't actually talked to him or not. Um, I know in, and, and every committee that we work on, we talk about AI and how it can be used for us and against it. And with energy, it's massive, because AI can help us predict a little bit better and a little bit faster, rather than just having spikes with blackouts, it can help us predict where we're moving and what the, what the load is going to be on, uh, which we already use it to some degree, but it helps better. Rainfall with our flooding, uh, with core engineers, we're looking at the way we handle that a little bit better, so it's already there, it's just how do we improve it? What else?
Senator, we have a couple minutes left.
Okay. I got time for you all, by the way, yes?
The last few years, we've been seeing continuing resolutions for our budget process. Do you see it going back to a normal, anytime soon?
We, it, the, our, so the continuing resolution, for what you guys don't know, we have twelve appropriation bills, twelve appropriation bills, that we got to pass every year. Twelve appropriation bills only represent roughly twenty-eight percent of our budget. Now, keep that in mind, the twelve appropriation bills is called discretionary spending. Mandatory spending is on automatic pilot. That means that you pay your taxes, goes in the Treasury, it goes right into mandatory spending, seventy-two percent of it. Um, and we, by, to go on a tangent here, we try to balance our budget off of twenty-eight percent. You'll never balance your budget off of twenty-eight percent. We got to get in the mandatory spending if we're ever going to balance a budget. We run a roughly a three trillion dollar deficit, you're not going to do that off twenty-eight percent. And by the way, if you actually take defense and put it into it, because we all agree we got to be investing heavily in defense, then you will run that number from seventy-two percent to about eighty-nine percent. And that's only one of the twelve appropriation bills. So now you have eleven appropriation bills that you're going to work off eleven percent, and you're going to try balancing the budget with eleven percent, with a three, three, three trillion dollar deficit. You could take those eleven appropriation bills, throw them in the trash and not even appropriate, and you still would, you'd still be running a deficit. So that's a, that kind of gives you a little idea of what we face, because you always talk about, you know, balancing the budget, and we do it every year off the twelve appropriation bills, and they're just playing games with you, because we can't do it. You cannot physically do it with the twelve, with the twelve appropriation bills, zero chance you can do that. It's not physically possible. And everybody that goes out there and rants about adding to the national debt, and they start talking about why they're voting no on the appropriation bills, they're absolutely one-hundred percent leading you the wrong, because they know as good as I know, you can't do it. Unless we want to get into mandatory spending, which is where the Social Security, Medicare, and Medicaid is, there's no chance you can ever balance the budget. Now, to go back to the twelve appropriation bills, um, individually, voting on each one individually, bring it to the floor, not packaged on five at a time, three at a time, two at a time, but voting on every one-on-one at a time. We've only done that once since the nineties. Actually voted on each one of them individually. Now, we have passed all twelve appropriation bills a handful of times since ninety-seven, but we've done it in a big packages, like five at a time, or six at a time, sometimes eleven at a time, or ten at a time, and they're called Omni Bills, where we put them all together. Uh, until we fix the system that causes us to get to what we have with twelve appropriation bills, we're going to continue to work off CRs, continuing resolution. This year's not going to be any different. Sometime in September, maybe September twentieth, maybe September thirtieth, I don't know. Sometime in September, we're going to pass another continuing resolution that's going to go to December, because it's political year, and we're going to get it past the election, and we're going to get it in the middle of December, and we're going to see which way the election goes. And if, uh, if President Trump wins the White House, and we win the, we win the Senate, and the House stays in the, in the hands of Republicans, and it, it expands, what's going to happen is more likely we'll go into a shutdown. Because Republicans aren't going to want to negotiate with Schumer, we're just going to wait, and there's extraordinary measures that can push place anyways, even after the, even after the funding goes through, we'll probably wait until we get sworn in office January third. I don't know if that's going to happen, but I would assume that's part of what's going to happen. If, um, uh, if Harris wins, then that means we probably still won the Senate, but we either lost the House, or we just have a very slim majority on the House, even maybe less than what we have now, which is very tough to get less, but we could do that. They will probably pass a CR to push us sometime into February, and then we'll have to decide what we're going to do at that point. But I feel like we're going to be working off a CR for the next half of the next fiscal year. By the time you get into February, really, it might, at that point, I think you should just pass a CR for the rest of the year, and start working on FY twenty-six, rather than just FY twenty-five. That's just my opinion, because if you, if you just start doing appropriation bills, it's hard enough to do one appropriation year, much less two at a time. Uh, but I think the CR is going to stick around for a while. Anything else, guys? Yes, ma'am, and I'll get to you in just a second. Yes, ma'am.
So the Chevron ruling.
Chevron deference, yes.
Yes. Do you think that that's going to have a broader, um, application? And the reason I say that is, federal agencies are putting out a ton of rules, regulation, administrative rules, that have huge, huge implications to businesses and to state governments and municipalities, et cetera, but it doesn't actually go through a vetting process. Just, just generally, you know, blur your thoughts on, it's the career people in the agencies, right?
Right, yeah. So first of all, for everybody that knows, Chevron deference, I'm going to assume, most of you all don't know what that is. Uh, Chevron sued EPA starting back in the eighties, it was fought all the way until two thousand and five. And, and the last ruling that was upheld by, by the Supreme Court was basically, I'm paraphrasing this, I'm not going to get into political language, because I'm definitely not an attorney, but basically said, uh, and what Chevron asked the courts was, if Congress has a different opinion on the agency, the ruling agency, in this case, the EPA, and this was specifically talking about the Clean Air and Clean Water Act, if the, if they have a different opinion, who has final say? So I'm paraphrasing all that. And all the way up until it was finalized in two thousand and five, what the court said was, because Congress delegated their powers to the agencies by creating them, by default, they made them the expert, therefore Congress refers to the agency for final rulemaking. The, what you saw after that was that was during the Bu- Bush administration. Biden comes in, and he uses it to start legislating, because who's the head of every agency is appointed by who?
President.
The president, right? So now the president is like, well, Trump, Bush should use it, not as much, because that, it was just finalized then. So Bush, and so Obama comes in, he starts going with WOTUS, uh, changing, you know, Clean Water Act, he started changing air, where you could sue for air, for, you know, for pollution coming in from your state, started using the EPA to stop all fossil per, uh, fossil fuel production, infrastructure for pipelines, all this stuff. And then he started sending it through IRS, Department of Labor, every agency was jumping on board. And it's been running absolutely rogue, underneath Trump, it tampered down, because why? He put different people in charge, and started having a reverse, and he said, for every one new regulation, we'll subtract twenty. And he actually is doing, for every one, he's subtracted closer to forty, and some people say twenty-two, so I'm going to say twenty-two, he swears it was forty, I don't know, I don't have the number, but we'll just say, let's just go with twenty-two. Um, now that agency comes back in, now this administration comes in, there isn't a single administration that's been overturned more by the courts than this administration, period. There hasn't been one single administration overturned more by the courts than this administration. Congress is still trying to figure out what our authority is underneath this new ruling. And you think, well, why don't you know? Because we've actually lost the first case in the nineties. So with the exception of Chuck Schumer, Chuck Grassley, and Nancy Pelosi, and I guess Hoyer, really no one else is left that was here during that time. So no one actually knows what our authority looks like, and so we are still trying to figure that out inside our agencies and inside our offices. But all these rules that they're trying to come out with to cram into the last minute as this administration is going out, they will be challenged in the court, and more than likely, they'll be overturned. Even if they're not, keep in mind, Trump administration can still go in and overturn them to an executive order too, and then we got to put the, we got to restore the balance of power back to Congress. So what that looks like, I, I honestly, I, I'm still trying to figure it out, but it was a huge hit to the agencies.
Department of Labor in particular has really gotten out of control.
Yeah, tell me about it. I went through three and a half years of audit from them, and they did, they found absolutely nothing. They left my office, but that didn't mean it didn't cost me a lot of money. Yes, I saw another hand over here.
Now, one question is going back to Ukraine.
Yeah.
You told us about why it's so important that the United States backed Ukraine.
Yeah.
Do our senators not understand that? Because some of them say, oh, we don't, we shouldn't be sending any more money to Ukraine.
Well, um, keep in mind, there's a fraction of our party, which is rightfully so, that doesn't believe in that. I mean, they're, they, you know, unfortunately, we've become so, our party has become isolationist, which you have a right to make that decision, if that's what you want, it's no big deal. But if you become an isolationist, then you mean that we're not interested in the world economy, and that means we've become an isolationist as a country, we might as well build a wall around it like China did. Um, because either we're going to be part of the world economy or not, if we're going to be part of it, I'd rather be part, I'd better rerun it, but that's why some of us believe, we shouldn't be using any, using any money in foreign aid, we shouldn't be policing the world. That's a hundred percent of their opinion, there's no matter what you tell them, they're not going to change their mind. But then also, a lot of these individuals aren't on the committee of jurisdiction, and so they don't get read in on all the information that we have. Now, they all know about the Budapest Memorandum, they all know about the gas supply, they all know about the earth minerals, and they all know about the food supply, every one of them know that. Every senator, every Congress, uh, person knows this, period. Uh, they don't maybe know all the, you know, the, the national security interests and the ramifications they have on it, but they make that decision because sometimes they pay politics, and this is what happens when you elect a, when I would say you elect someone that this is the best job they ever had, and it's their identity, and they're, they, they want to play politics with it, then do what's right. It, it, I've been criticized all over the place for my support for Ukraine. I mean, all over the place. Some people in this room may criticize me, which I appreciate you not speaking up and making it be awkward. Um, and, and you're, you have the right to do that, I have no problem. You have your opinion, I have my opinion, and sometimes my wife has different opinions than me too, and guess what? When she has a different opinion than me, what do I do? I apologize and tell her she's right. Uh, and I can do that for you if it makes you feel better, but the fact is, I still got my opinion, because when I walk away from her, I say, you're wrong. So, I, but that, but people still have their opinion about it, and when it's a really loud voice, like on some of the conservative talk shows about this, uh, it's just easier not to fight them over it. I mean, I got a call from, um, someone's son, and I got a call from a very well-known conservative talk show, and one guy that has a very big following on social media, and it was just pounding me over the fact that we were negotiating this deal with the Democrats, with President Trump, and with the White House on getting our national security funding done, um, during the spring. And it just really came after me hard. The thing, the reason why they didn't come after me real hard is because President Trump was on board with it. He, he, we, we were working with him. He was the reason why we got first right of refusal to the, to the, um, earth minerals, it's because of President Trump. And so then these people know it, but they're just not willing to stand up and explain it. So I, I don't, the only thing I explain it to is that they, that we have different opinions on it, so.
Different opinions on where these earth minerals come from?
How important they are, I guess, right? I don't know where else we're going to get them. Yes, ma'am.
And who determines the amount of money that goes to foreign aid and, you know, presently Ukraine?
President.
You guys all get to, I mean, the senators, representatives.
No, the law of the foreign aid is discretionary from the president, we do put some funding into it, but a lot of it, now, keep in mind, foreign aid, all the foreign aid we spend combined in less than one percent of our budget. Now, all of it is less than one percent of our budget. People, I mean, so if you cut out all foreign aid, still you're not balancing our budget, that's only, you still got ninety-nine percent of it left. Um, once again, a lot of people don't know that either. But we, when it's, when it's big chunks like, um, national security with Ukraine, uh, that has, that's above and beyond, we have to fund that. And we, Congress has to make that decision. Most of just, most of the foreign aid is discretion to the President of the United States on where they want to spend the money on certain programs, that usually goes to the State Department. And so the Secretary of State, in this case, Secretary Blinken, who I have no trust and faith, and I think the guy's an absolute liar. I mean, and I called that to his face, and I'd do it again if he was standing right there, and see if he defends himself by me calling him a liar, because he knows he's a liar, because he's lied to me personally, and there's a whole lot of stuff to that one, a lot of stuff, way too much to unpack. Uh, and, um, but he makes the decision, because a lot of it comes to the Secretary of State. Secretary of State runs a lot of our foreign aid based on needs and, and where the State Department is. Yes, sir?
So.
I was wondering where you were going to ask a question, our soon-to-be state representative around here.
Let's, let's hear what we think about outside of Oklahoma.
Yeah.
Where you think we are come November.
Uh, you know, I, Harris has changed the race. She's gave this progressive movement, um, something to stand up beside, and, uh, she's also brought over the independents and libertarians. Uh, one thing about libertarians and independents is they are the majority maker right now. I mean, they make the decision, Republicans are where they're going to be, and Democrats are where they're going to be. Um, the problem is, there's some Republicans that aren't a hundred percent on board with President Trump, and they're, all the Democrats are on board with nationally. I mean, I get in Oklahoma, maybe not, but if, if you're talking about the East Coast, the West Coast, and you're part of that movement, you're for Harris, no question about it. So independents and, and libertarians are usually single-issue voters. And most of the time, they're voting on social issues, not economic, not economic issues, not foreign policy issues, it's social issues, which I argue sometimes we don't even play a role in that. Congress really, that's more of a state issue than it is a federal issue, and the Constitution, it really doesn't, if you read the Constitution, it really doesn't tell us about the social issues. And if people think that Congress is going to fix social issues, you're wasting your time, we're not going to fix, we're the most dysfunctionally social society in the world, probably, in Washington DC. So if you think we're going to fix it, you're out of your mind, we're not going to fix it. But that's what they're fixated on. And that's what people get ginned up and get angry about. And a lot of people vote on that. And, and if you watch any of your commercials, if you've been watching Olympics, and you guys may be boycotted on the Olympics because of the opening ceremony, I get that, but I'm an Olympic junkie. I'm sorry, I still watch it. I record it and I go back and watch it. And I just, and plus wrestling's going on right now, and you guys should know where I stand on that one. But if you watch it, almost every commercial break, you have a Harris commercial come up. And what is she hitting on? Is she hitting on the economy? Is she hitting on foreign policy? She hitting on all social issues, every one of them. Because that's going to independents and libertarians. And they're the majority maker right now. So it's tight. And to see how it plays out, it, it's, 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 you know, I, I think we're still going to win because this honeymoon phase that Harris is on right now ends coming after the DNC. She, she's got a bump right now after the convention. We'll see, she'll probably have another little bump. And then the campaign actually starts. And she's going to have to talk to the public without a teleprompter at some point. And what they're doing is they're running the same campaign they ran for Biden underneath COVID. They kept him in the basement and kept everything scripted. At some point, she's got to go out there and talk on her own. And every time she talks off script, she makes me look smart. And that's, that's tough. I got a still education. So they did something right. I guess maybe, maybe that's why I'm in politics. And, and so I, I think the voters will, will, I think the voters at some point will start going around. You'll see the numbers start changing, but it's going to be a close election. I think the Senate, we win regardless. I think our floor in the Senate is 52 seats. We already have 51, if you really think about it, because we have West Virginia, it's done. Tim Sheehy in West, in Montana, he's, he's killing it. He's a good friend of mine. I was supposed to actually go with President Trump on the 9th, which is Friday, I think. I was supposed to go with him. They called it yesterday and we're making some changes. So I don't think I'm actually going to be traveling with him now on Friday. But I'll be picking up with the team in Texas on Sunday then. And so he's, he's doing a great job and he's going to win that. We're going to retire Tester. That puts us at 51. Next, not next Tuesday, two weeks from Tuesday, I'll have Bernie Moreno from Ohio in Oklahoma. I was recently up in Ohio with him campaigning. He's, you know, he's almost neck and neck with Cheryl Brown. And Trump is up by 16 points in that state. So that's a big deficit for them to come over. So I think that puts us at, at 51 with Bernie Moreno winning, winning Ohio. And then you have Governor Hogan, who is in Maryland. He's up by six points. Now, he's down, Trump is around 22% deficit there. That's tough. But Hogan's already won two gubernatorial races. That's pretty impressive. You know, Governor Hogan's going to be somebody that you may not like, you may not agree with. He may be someone like Mitt Romney, or Susan Collins, or Lisa Murkowski, or somebody that, 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 you know, that, you know, there's a group of Republicans that just can't stand them. But I'll tell you, they're all better than any Democrat I've dealt with on the Senate. So I may not agree with all their issues, but I'd rather have them on our team than they're not on our team. Because they still make the majority. You guys understand that? So we may not agree with all their issues, but we'll agree with 80% of them. And right now, it's 100% of the stuff that we disagree on on the other side of the aisle. So you got to, you got to give and take, because these are battleground states. So that would put us at roughly 52. And then we haven't even talked about Eric in Wisconsin. Wisconsin's a complete toss-up. That's why you have JD in Wisconsin and Harris both in Wisconsin today. You have New Mexico, Nilly in New Mexico. New Mexico's at play. Wouldn't have thought New Mexico's at play, but because of oil and gas, and it's just ravaged their economy in New Mexico, New Mexico's at play now. That's a possible pickup. I think it's tough, but there's a, it's, it's definitely considered a, a, a winnable state now. Arizona, Carrie Lake is doing good. The problem with Carrie Lake is her high number, her high number. High number is 58, or 40, 48%. I think she comes in around 45, 46% unless Trump just does really good. The last part, last Republican to get over 50% in that state was John McCain. And it was on his second to last election. His last election, he just got 49%. So it's a very hard state to get 50% as a Republican. A Republican can get 45 all day, every day. Put your name on the ticket, you're in a general, you'll get 45% of the vote. You can't get that last 5%. So that's going to depend on how good Trump does in Arizona. Once again, while I'll be in Arizona in October, I'm going with the Trump campaign and on myself. We're going to be campaigning in New Mexico, we're going to be in Arizona, we're going to be in Utah, we're going to be in Nevada, and we're going to be in Montana. I'm going to be all over the place. And, and then Sam Brown in Arizona, or in Nevada, great guy. We've had him in the state twice. He stayed at our house. The guy has, you know, burned over 80% of his body, blew up in Afghanistan, met his wife at the burn unit in San Antonio. She's just no nonsense. Don't give me excuses, show me results, but yet she still loves you. But you fear her greatly. And she's absolutely beautiful. And he had a home run with that lady. And she's as tough as he is. I consider them real good friends. He's killing it. I believe he wins Nevada. But he is absolutely a stud. And a guy that I just feel, I mean, you're in the room with that guy for five minutes. He's burned over all his body, his entire face burned. And you come out of that room, you feel better about yourself, not because you feel sorry for him, because he's so positive of man. I mean, he's just so positive. He just, you just get geared up, you're like, yeah, my glass is always half-full, buddy. You know, you just, he's just that type of guy. I feel good about that race. So I, I name all those races because we're going to win four of those to put us at 52. We, there is a path for us to get to 57. I don't think we hit 57 unless Trump just wipes the face of the earth in this election. And we, and he does a great day. And we win all the battleground states, then we're at 57. I think our floor is 52. So we're going to win the Senate. The House depends on the top of the ticket. If Harris wins, I believe we lose the House. Or if we hold on to it, it's going to be just barely like this. Right now, we're like this, it'll be like this. If Trump wins, we, we, we increase seats. So, is that breaking it down for you? Anything else, guys? Yes, sir, yes, sir. I'll go over here. I know I'm running late, I'm just trying to get to them. Yes, they're all here and I appreciate the turnout, yes.
What's being done with Chinese money buying up farmland?
Yeah, good question.
And funding grow operations in the country?
Well, a question about Chinese investing into our, into our economy with, with land and stuff, okay? The groves, that's our fault, man. I'm just saying, that's, that we've invited the illegal activity to come in our state because we legalized marijuana. You can say we wrecked, we put it, you know, medical marijuana, it's legalized, okay? Just to give you an idea, we have over 8,000 permits. I think it's 8,300, 8,500, how many? 8,500. Do you know how many permits are issued for grow in the state of California, which is slightly bigger than Oklahoma? 50. So do that math for me, please. Someone figure that one out. We have a population of 4 million. They have a population of how many? I don't know. Someone Google it, you can tell me. It's more than 4 million, though. And we have 8,500 grows and they have 50 permitted. Money laundering, drug activity. We invited not just, you know, the, the Chinese to be, to run illegal operations, but we've invited the cartels too. And, and so buying up land. You know, farmland, we don't, how many transactions, someone, if anybody in here real estate? Nobody in real estate? Okay. How many transactions you think we have in this county alone, a day?
25, or just?
We've already had that in Stigler.
Really?
I don't know.
I don't know, I have no idea.
But it's a lot, right? Let's just say, I don't know either. I'm just taking a guess. So once again, someone Google that, that's what Google's for. But it's a lot. And so for us to take, to trace down every one of those transactions is almost impossible. And then it's not the CCP, Chinese Communist Party, doing it, or the PRC, the People's Republican of China. It's not, they're not the ones, they're not the ones buying it. It's a shell company that has, it's, it's a hedge fund that the main, that one of the main investors of the hedge fund, which is, a hedge fund could be, let's say, you know how you were taught to do graphs and with bubbles when you was in school? And this could be this Oki Joe's hedge fund right here, right? And then they have all these different bubbles that come off of them. And off every one of those bubbles, they have a different bubble that come off of it. And so there may be three or four bubbles off of this one. And this is the one that's funded by a Chinese investor. That's not the CCP or PRC, but some billionaire out of Chinese, or China. And they have four, three or four different companies on top of it that they're buying the farmland for. It's impossible for us to find it until they start filing for taxes on it. Then that's when we typically find who actually owns it. Because you got to go all the way back to the main source, because they're the owners of it. To do that on every real estate transaction is impossible for us to do it. So what do we pay attention to in the United States? Critical sites, critical infrastructure. Things that are being by a dam, being sold by a dam. Things that are being sold around a base, around a shipyard, around a bridge, around a silo. We paid close attention to those. We didn't, but now we do. Now we do it a lot more diligently. In fact, if we don't have time, we'll actually put a hold on the transaction and say, hold on. At the same time, as a, as a country, how do we prevent you from selling your land for three times what it's worth? If you're, if you're selling 100 acres and someone came up and offered you a million dollars for that, you'd be like, what do you want, title? Right? And, and then, and then, then the government comes in and says, hold on, you can't sell it for a million dollars. What would you say?
Free market.
Yes. In fact, you may not even use this type of language or sign language, which you may give us a double bird. Say, a million dollars is life-changing, I'm going to sell it. So we, so we're a free market. So it's very hard for us to say, no, you can't sell that. So what we do when it's being sold and we see who's buying it, we allow them to go ahead and sell it, and then we take the land through eminent domain. And when we take it through eminent domain, instead of paying for the inflated price of it, we do the average of what land is selling for around there, and then we have to pay them back. We can't just take it from eminent domain and take it from them. So we actually have to give them part of the money. We just don't have to give them the full amount that they paid for it. Does that make sense to you? So it's a long, that's a long explanation, but that's actually why we do what we do and why it's hard for us to keep up with all the transactions. It's also another hand, yes.
What do you think our status is on our current military strength in this country?
Um, we're building. And everything we're building, we can't get there until 2025, 2027. We fought for 20 years a war on terror. And it was quite a different fight. We wasn't paying attention to the technology. You know, the war on terror, we wasn't having to worry about missile defense. Wasn't having to worry about air assault priority. Wasn't having to worry about our ships and Navy. We wouldn't have to worry about that kind of stuff. Because it wasn't what we were fighting with. We were fighting with guys running out of, you know, running around in Toyota Tacomas with the 50-cal mounted on top of it. Now, since we left Afghanistan, they got MRAMs. But hey, who's speaking? But my, my point that I'm, I'm getting to is that the fight was quite different. So when we took our eyes necessarily off of just a war on terror and started work, looking at what we call conventional war, we realized we were behind. And we were, we were pushing to get caught up. Now, we're not too far behind. We're still, but there is some technology that we should have been way advanced in. We're able to match people, but we're behind our industrial complex. Technology were there. Most of the technology from the CCP and Russia was stolen from us. So we had the technology, we had the expertise in it. We just may not have the stockpiles that we need, or the, or the military industry to stand it up. And I'll, I'll use this for example. I'm using rough numbers here. China brings on roughly 20 ships, rough numbers, I'm using round numbers, 20 ships a month. We're producing about two. And we're retiring more than that. Chinese Navy technically is larger than us by considerable amount. Some estimates show two and a half times, some show three. Now, they don't have the expertise we'd have on it. And they don't have the quality of ships that we have on it, but they're getting better. You start talking about planes. We're talking about building single digits F-35s. Their jet, that is equivalent, not the same, F-35 is the most advanced fighter jet out there. But their fighter jet, which is, comes in much cheaper, but it's very capable and more capable than our F-22 and F-16, which is why we're putting around our F-16s. They're producing at a much higher rate. And they can do it much cheaper than us. Which just sheer numbers, eventually they, they overwhelm us. You know, do you know how many, do you know what type of missile defense we have on our coast? Doesn't exist. Their entire coastline has missile defense on it. I mean, so we're behind and we're catching up. We're working on it. But we're not behind in the fact that we can't fight them and beat them. We're behind on we're not where we should be. We still have the greatest and baddest military in the world. We still have the personnel and the people and the equipment to get the fight done. But we don't have the residual that we need. So that residual is what we're working on. That industrial complex we're working on. Now, it's same thing in World War II, right? We got punched in the face by, by Japan in World War II. You know, we wasn't prepared. It took us 12 months to actually get in the fight. We took a black eye at first. But what did General Yomomoto say? I fear all we've done is woken a sleeping giant. That would be the same thing with us. One thing that we do well in this country, regardless of what happens, when we get punched, regardless of you're Republican or Democrat, we rally behind that thing really quick. The whole world pays attention. And we can get spun up faster. Right now, we haven't got punched in the face yet to require that. But if we do, we will respond and we will win. We just might take a black eye at first. But taking a black eye and taking a shot through the heart is two different things. I mean, shoot, I've got kicks in the teeth and my teeth look good, but they're fake. Anything else, guys? All right, I appreciate you all turning out like this, really do. This is, this is wonderful. I mean, I, I, you guys have a lot of stuff to do. I started it like this, I'll finish it like this. I appreciate you guys letting me be in the fight. There's a lot of stuff going on around the world. It gets scary. As I referred to it earlier, my, my, my glass on this guy, my glass is always half-full. Right? And I hear people all the time saying, I feel like we're too far gone. I don't know if we can cover from this. I, I push back on that and say, no, don't tell me that. Because you know, you're saying we're going to fail. I don't believe in failure. Failure's not an option. We might take a hit, we might get hit in the black, we might have to take a, a, you know, a gut punch. But we will respond because we got to, for the country. I travel all over the world. Places I wish I didn't have to go to, some places I'm at all when I see it. Nothing feels as good when I come home. We're blessed to be in this country. And there's not another country I'd rather live in than right here. This is where I want to live. This is it. We're still the beacon of hope. We're still the greatest nation in the world. We're still, we still represent freedom. Now, this is an important election we got coming up. I would say, we've heard it our whole life, most important election we've ever came to in our life. I can't think of one that's actually shows a bigger contrast between two different directions our country's going to go than this election. I mean, two completely different directions. Not ideas, direction. We're going two different directions. Two parties, two different ideas, two different directions. So I think it's vitally important. But guys, I'd rather be right here in this fight than any other place. I mean it sincerely. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to be in the fight, because I want to be in the fight. I, I, now, I'm not always going to be in the fight. There are going to be a time I come home and I'm not growing old in this seat. I'm just telling you, I, I'd love Senator Enoff, he did a great job. That's not me. I've missed a lot, my kids, I'm not going to miss my grandkids growing up. And, but I'm going to give you everything I got in the meantime, and I'm thankful for it. But we need you guys in the fight with us, and you guys are there, because you're here today. But when you hear somebody say, well, you think you're too far gone, and maybe you're the person to say that, don't, guys, we're American, we will be resolved. We will come back, we will make it work. We're, we're off-center right now, we're not where we need to be. It may take us going through a very hard time.